All right, I'm gonna call our December Board Meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Declaration of quorum, seven members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We've just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district. We thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That'll bring us to Item C, Elections. Mr. Martindale.
Mr. Horak, I believe we need to swear in some newly re-elected Board members this evening. We'll start with Mr. Josh Ben, Place Three. Mr. Ben, if you'll come forward and introduce the individual that's going to administer oath of office.
I have one.
And make sure when it's over, you check in with Ms. Horn, because if you don't, then we'll all be in trouble. So, all right, very good.
What's your name again?
Joseph.
Okay. Just checking. This is one of my sons, Joseph Ben. He's a 2020 graduate.
Yes.
Of College Station High School and now attends Texas A&amp;M. And he's going to swear me in.
Yep.
All right.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Joshua Ben.
I, Joshua Ben.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of College Station Board Trustee, Place Three.
Of the Office of College Station Board Trustee, Place Three.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, Mr. Horak, Jeff Horak, Place Four.
With me tonight are two of my daughters. This is Julia. She is a sixth grader at Pecan Trail. And this is Clara. She is a second grader at Greens Prairie. And then my little one over there, she's a kindergartner at Greens Prairie. And my bride is here to take pictures. She's at Pecan Trail as well. So, yeah, let's get this started.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Jeff Horak.
I, Jeff Horak.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of College Station Board Trustee, Place Four.
Of the Office of College Station Board Trustee, Place Four.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of...
And.
And laws.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And for Place Five, Ms. McAdams.
Thanks. And tonight, my mother's gonna swear me in. My mother was a former school board member for a couple of terms, so she's been on the other side of this. And also, thanks to my family for coming, my husband and both my kids. My daughter graduated two years ago from Kennesaw, and my son's currently a junior at Kennesaw.
All right. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas.
I, Kimberly McAdams, do solemnly affirm.
I, Kimberly McAdams, do solemnly affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of College Station Board of Trustee, Place Five, of the State of Texas.
Of College Station Board of Trustee, Place Five, of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Of the United States and of this state, so help me God. I think we did it. Right. Thank you.
You wanna wait?
You guys want to see a speech?
No.
Cut that out this year.
All right, that will bring us to Item D1, Pledge Allegiance to the Flag and the Texas Flag. Mr. Martindale.
Come on over. Oh, hey, guys. How are y'all? Very good. Well, I was going to introduce your principals, but since they're hiding over there, we'll just leave them. We have students this evening joining us from Cypress Grove and College Station Middle School that are going to assist us with our pledges in Moment of Silence. So I assume you guys are going to introduce yourselves real quick. Very good. Come on up here, sweetie.
Hi, I'm Easton Tryout. I'm in sixth grade at Cypress Grove. My favorite hobby is deer hunting. My favorite subject is PE and art. When I graduate, I hope to do something with architectural engineering or design engineering, maybe with a minor in business. Those are my current roles, but they might change.
Good morning. Good evening. My name is Willie Harmon. I am sixth grade at Cypress Grove. I like all of my classes, but I'm working on math. When I graduate, I could probably try out for college football, try to work for the NFL, and if that doesn't work, the NBA.
Hi, I'm Morgan Coker. I'm an eighth grader at CSMS. I am also the secretary in NJHS. I love all of my classes, really, but I really major in theater and art. And when I grow up, I want to be an author and an illustrator or some sort of form of writing.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lily Mueller. I am the NJHS president of CSMS. I like all my classes, really, but I love basketball, and I did cross-country for the CSMS. And when I grow up, I would like to be in the medical field.
All right, guys, who's gonna pick us off? Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And now for the Moment of Silence.
Thank you. You may not be seated.
Very good. Thank y'all. We have student, one group student recognition this evening. Mr. Glenn Wickel's going to assist his students as he calls your name. If you'll come forward, meet us for your certificate on the far end, and then please allow the Board Member to shake your hand and congratulate you on your accomplishment. So, Mr. Glenn Wickel.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, members of the Board. It is my honor, as always, to have the opportunity to recognize those students and staff who have not only competed but also won on a high level at the state or national level. I would like to point out, since I see Mr. Ross sitting out there, that the A&amp;M Consolidated Vet Science Team was invited tonight, but they had an FFA function tonight, so they will be here in January to be recognized. But tonight, we get to honor the College Station Girls Cross Country Team that placed third in the 5A State Meet at Old Settlers Park in Round Rock. They earned a bronze medal for the team. Megan Roberts finished seventh place individually, and Katherine Brunson finished 18th to earn All-State honors from the Cross Country Coaches Association of Texas. Delaney Ulrich, Maddie Jones, and Jaden Deverna rounded out the scoring for College Station's seven-member team. In addition, Roberts and Brunson were consensus All-State selections, as they were also named to the Texas Girls Coaches Association and Texas High School Coaches Association All-State Teams. Jones and Ulrich were also selected All-State by the Texas Girls Coaches Association. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your certificate and be recognized. Megan Roberts.
(applause) Katherine Brunson.
(applause)
Delaney Ulrich. Maddie Jones. Jaden Deverna. Ellie Seagraves. Audrey Wong. And cross-country coach, Mr. Josh Munson. (applause) Sure. All right, here we go. Make sure you can see the camera there. Great job, y'all. (applause) Five minutes. Let's get faster. All right, that'll bring us to Item D3. We'd like to recognize the artwork there at the back of our board meeting from River Bend Elementary and College Station Middle School. Quite a few pieces of artwork from our students here in College Station, I see. So make sure you take a look at that before you head out this evening. That'll bring us to Item E, Board Reports. Who would like to go first?
The Personnel Advisory Committee met on the first, and there was a superintendent's update, of course, where the, kind of like the demographic in the presentation that we got this evening. Mr. Martindale talked about that, as well as a discussion about the VATRE election and the payment schedule for the employees and teachers of the district. And then, one of the specific employee topics that came up dealt with prescription coverage, and I think Mr. Simak is here, and he went over that and kind of explained some of the process. And hopefully, everybody left with a plan in case they had any issues with their prescription coverages and medications and so forth. Kind of like a learning curve there with the new insurance. And then, of course, there was the discussion that we always have, and the discussion that districts across the state constantly have in dealing with substitutes and the need for more substitutes. Although, from what Mr. Simak indicated, it's improving significantly the last week or so. But a fairly short and sweet meeting, and those were the topics.
Thanks. First of all, there was no SHAC meeting this last month. The next one will be, I think, January 19th. But the Education Foundation did meet, and a couple of, it seems like I always have a record to report, a new record this year on the December STAR Educators recognitions. And if you don't know about this, I actually put this down as my favorite fundraising or, I guess, program for the Education Foundation. It is a simple, easy way to, one, support the Education Foundation, but really to recognize our STAR educators throughout the district, whether it's a teacher, a principal, a nurse, whoever. And so, they raised, they had a record number of 570 STAR educators for the December, which is great. Also, wanted to let folks know that the scholarship applications are open, and they are due March 1st. Or will open, sorry, I gotta read, I gotta put the glasses on. It will open later this week, and then they're due March 1st. So that's for kids with, you know, seniors to get those applications. Lots of, lots of scholarship money goes out every year. And then the last thing is just that reminder that 50 Minute Can Cook is right around the corner, February 3rd. Gonna be amazing. And tickets are on sale now. If you need one, they're out there. I think that's it. Did I miss anything on Education Foundation?
The appetizer category will be wide open this year. That's all I had.
The District Education Improvement Council met Thursday. It was one of the most efficient superintendent updates we've had under a minute fifteen. Very congra, thank you, Mr. Martindale. The committee discussed calendars A, B, and C options, which, as we heard in the workshop, A and C were chosen by the council, and so now we will call them A and B. And then, the exciting audit committee will be meeting in January, and we're all looking forward to seeing that at the meeting in January.
Anything else? All right, that'll bring us to the superintendent update. Mr. Martindale.
All right, thank you, Ms. Horak. And a couple of these items that we've heard in other committee reports. Again, in November, we had our demographers report that showed 1% to 2% growth annually or year-over-year for the next 10 years in their projections. And at workshop earlier this evening, of course, we heard from our CFO, Ms. Drawes, as she took the demographers' information and applied that to Policy FC Local and our facilities. So we'll continue to keep an eye on our projections and our facility use. Also, the demographers' information will be utilized as a part of our comprehensive facilities assessment that's currently being performed by VlK Architects. We do anticipate having that report out to the Board in February. We wrapped up our financial audit for the year ending August 31st, 2022. We do have third-party auditor, and they will be in attendance in January to provide us with our financial audit. And as mentioned, also, at workshop, we heard from Ms. Parkinson regarding the 23-24 school calendar and the development process by DEIC. We'll have those two options that she would share with us earlier this evening, going up on our website later this week for community voting and feedback. DEIC will consider that feedback at their January meeting and hope to come forward with a recommendation for the Board to consider at the January meeting as far as the 23-24 school calendar. A number of student recognitions. I'm going to read these so I don't get them wrong. Fifty-four musicians from our middle and intermediate schools recently earned a spot on the Texas Music Educators Association All-Region Eight Middle School Band. So congratulations to those 54 students. We have five orchestra students from A&amp;M Consolidated and College Station High Schools recently selected to perform with the Texas Music Educators Association Texas All-State Orchestra and 6A Symphonic Band. So congratulations to those students. We also want to extend our congratulations to Welborn Middle School Criminal Justice Teacher, Dr. Matthew Garing, for being named the Insight Brazis Fowley Magazine 2022 Top Secondary School Teacher. So congratulations to Matthew and Mr. Stewart at Welborn. We had seven members of the A&amp;M Consolidated Congressional Debate Team advance to the finals of the 11th Annual Capitol Congress Meet, where these students get to debate at the Texas Capitol. And also, we want to wish the best of luck to College Station High School Cougars. They play for the state championship Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at AT&amp;T Stadium. That's it for superintendent's report.
All right. That will bring us to Item F, Hearing of Citizens. Are there any others? Okay. During this time, public comments are welcome. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The Board asks that those addressing the Board refrain from derogatory comments. That'll bring us to our first card here. When you come up, we're coming to this microphone. Correction. Okay, I think we're coming to this one. First one is Jennifer Spar.
Howdy. My name is Jennifer Spar, and I live at 5359 Prairie Don Trail. For the last 10 years, Kennesaw athletic parents have been hearing the same story. We will form a team to determine facilities' needs, wash, rinse, and repeat. Over the summer, Mr. Martindale attended a Tiger Club meeting in which he outlined several improvements to the football field, wind wraps, trash removal, which we appreciated, and told us he would form a team to figure out what else was needed. In November, Mr. Starnes attended a Tiger Club meeting in which he had told us he would form a team and walk the facilities to determine what the needs and wants are. In early October, trustee Mr. Ben was quoted in the paper stating he didn't see any immediate needs. The same day, trustee Ms. McAdams attended the Tiger Club meeting as a candidate for reelection and got an earful concerning that quote, assuming she told Mr. Ben about it, because the next day, we all got an email from him stating that the district has already identified the need to update the Kennesaw Fieldhouse and press box. So I responded to Mr. Ben's email about a direct need particularly for the Kennesaw softball program and copied administration. And I received back what is essentially a slap on the hand from Mr. Starnes telling me I must address any questions or concerns I have directly to my particular sports coach. I should be able and comfortable addressing any questions or concerns to anyone on the Board. I elect you. If I had more time, I could list all of the perceived issues that we, as parents, feel the administration is ignoring, but since I am limited, I'm going to talk about one thing that just might get your attention. In 2007, a Grapevine High School baseball player died after getting hit in the back of the head while near his high school batting cages. The student was pitching to a teammate in a batting cage, and a teammate in a cage behind him hit a line drive that went through an opening in the net. School officials determined that a secondary protective screen netting that could have stopped the ball was not in place. So a 17-year-old died because the school did not provide a simple piece of equipment. At Tiger Club meetings every month, we approve equipment for all of the various teams that should be provided by the district for safety reasons, yet they are not. Tiger Club has spent thousands and thousands of dollars on equipment in just the short six months that I have been a part of it. The Kennesaw Sports Medicine Department saw almost 2,500 appointments in their facility between August and November. Have any one of you ever been inside that room? There is not enough space for them to treat these student athletes safely. The weight rooms are packed. There is not enough space for the athletes to be in there safely, working out. The metal press boxes above the baseball and softball facilities are just one lightning strike away from being a disaster. So please do not sit there and think that us maroon parents just want something new and shiny. We want our kids to be safe in the facilities that they use every day. We want our kids to be proud of the facilities that they use every day. You can remove coaches, you can remove coordinators, whoever you feel is not doing enough to keep the parents happy, but at the end of the day, we are going to continue to fight for our kids and their needs, no matter who you put on the chain of command.
Thank you. That will bring us to Wendy, and I apologize, I cannot pronounce. Latendra? Okay.
My name's Wendy Latendra, and I live at 5131 Bellary Bend Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to address the Board, as this is the mechanism afforded to parents, taxpayers, and voters to speak to our elected officials. The Board in 2010 decided to open a second high school, and there were several meetings for the community to offer their feedback on a decision surrounding the opening of College Station High School. I attended each meeting, and a consistent theme from those who were concerned about the zoning decisions emerged. Several parents, business members, real estate agents, and rezoning committee members were concerned about two distinctive tracks that were being set up, and College Station High School was seen as the more desirable school among two options. Kennesaw continued to lose enrollment past the split of the students that was completed in May 14, to the point that an entire wing of Kennesaw was shut down due to low enrollment. At the time, College Station's enrollment continued to grow, and College Station was eventually classified as a 5A D1 school. The words "the expansion of College Station High School" became a part of the vernacular that the district's discussions that it was a given when, not if, the expansion would occur. It was spoken as a given. This speech is very purposeful, because it primes the voters of what needs are needed for the district in the future. In 2017, the Board decided to rezone students back to Kennesaw to better utilize the district's assets and to be more mindful of taxpayer dollars. Two rezones occurred in '17 and '18 to achieve this purpose. The demographers' estimated growth through 2030, as it showed enrollment would reach well over 3,000 students at Kennesaw. This was the time when the Board should have also devised a plan to renovate and build new athletic and extracurricular facilities for the eventual growth of Kennesaw to a 6A high school, which will occur as possibly as early as 2024. There is a need to get Kennesaw more in line with the facilities at College Station High School. What I mean with that is locker rooms, weight room space, athletic training rooms, press boxes, practice and game facilities. Currently, the facilities at Kennesaw are more on par with the 4A school. There is a window, or was a window, from 2018 to the present to prime the voters on the need for expand and remodel the facilities at Kennesaw. The public needed to hear the words "expansion" and "remodel" of consolidated high school athletic facilities as much as we heard the words "expansion" of College Station High School. There's a lot of purple currently on the Board and in administration, which of many Board Members I have voted for. I voted both maroon and purple. I am asking for you to be the champion for Kennesaw and to present a plan to the voters in 2023 to address the inequities. Hold public feedback meetings, as previous Boards have done, so the voters can understand the needs.[1540.63] At Tiger Club meetings every month, we approve equipment for all of the various teams that should be provided by the district for safety reasons, yet they are not. Tiger Club has spent thousands and thousands of dollars on equipment in just the short six months that I have been a part of it. The CONSOL Sports Medicine Department saw almost 2,500 appointments in their facility between August and November. Have any one of you ever been inside that room? There is not enough space for them to treat these student athletes safely. The weight rooms are packed. There is not enough space for the athletes to be in there safely working out. The metal press boxes above the baseball and softball facilities are just one lightning strike away from being a disaster. So please do not sit there and think that us Maroon parents just want something new and shiny. We want our kids to be safe in the facilities that they use every day. We want our kids to be proud of the facilities that they use every day. You can remove coaches, you can remove coordinators, whoever you feel is not doing enough to keep the parents happy. But at the end of the day, we are going to continue to fight for our kids and their needs, no matter who you put on the chain of command.
Thank you. That will bring us to Wendy, and I apologize, I cannot pronounce, Latendra. Okay.
My name's Wendy Latinder, and I live at 5131 Ballery Bend Drive. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board, as this is a mechanism afforded to parents, taxpayers, and voters to speak to our elected officials. The board in 2010 decided to open a second high school, and there were several meetings for the community to offer their feedback on a decision surrounding the opening of College Station High School. I attended each meeting, and a consistent theme from those who were concerned about the zoning decisions emerged. Several parents, business members, real estate agents, and rezoning committee members were concerned about two distinctive tracks that were being set up, and College Station High School was seen as the more desirable school among two options. CONSOL continued to lose enrollment past the split of the students that was completed in May 14, to the point that an entire wing of CONSOL was shut down due to low enrollment. At the time, College Station's enrollment continued to grow, and College Station was eventually classified as a 5A D1 school. The words "the expansion of College Station High School" became a part of the vernacular that the district's discussions, that it was a given when, not if, the expansion would occur. It was spoken as a given. This speech is very purposeful, because it primes the voters of what needs are need for the district in the future. In 2017, the board decided to rezone students back to CONSOL to better utilize the district's assets and to be more mindful of taxpayer dollars. Two rezones occurred in '17 and '18 to achieve this purpose. The demographers estimated growth through 2030, as it showed enrollment would reach well over 3,000 students at CONSOL. This was the time when the board should have also devised a plan to renovate and build new athletic and extracurricular facilities for the eventual growth of CONSOL to a 6A high school, which will occur as possibly as early as 2024. There is a need to get CONSOL more in line with the facilities at College Station High School. What I mean with that is locker rooms, weight room space, athletic training rooms, press boxes, practice and game facilities. Currently, the facilities at CONSOL are more on par with the 4A school. There are, there is a window, or was a window, from 2018 to the present to prime the voters on the need for expand and remodel the facilities at CONSOL. The public needed to hear the words "expansion" and "remodel" of consolidated high school athletic facilities as much as we heard the words "expansion" of College Station High School. There's a lot of purple currently on the board and in administration, which of many board members I have voted for. I voted both Maroon and Purple. I am asking for you to be the champion for CONSOL and to present a plan to the voters in 2023 to address the inequities. Hold public feedback meetings, as previous boards have done, to, so the voters can understand the needs of the district. Get it in the media and explain to voters why these additions are responsible or are needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That will bring us to item G, Consent Agenda. Those items are H, item H, item K2 through K7, and that is all.
Except the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ben, a second by Mr. Hall. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to item I, I1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding Updates to the CSISD House Bill 3 Board Goals and Progress Monitoring Measures. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak, and board members. We heard Dr. Hickman give us a much more detailed presentation on this item at workshop. Here with a brief update and looking for action, our Executive Director of Elementary Ed, Dr. Stormy Hickman.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Mr. Horak, and members of the board. As Mr. Martindale stated, this is just going to be a quick review of the items that we discussed in Board Workshop regarding our House Bill 3 board adopted goals. We'll start with just that reminder of Goal 2 from CSISD's Strategic Plan, that one of our goals is to elevate outcomes for our historically underperforming student groups, and that really has been a focus for us as we're working on developing these goals. House Bill 3 requires that we take, that the board take action on three different parts of district goals. The first one is those district goals themselves, which must be aligned with third-grade star reading and math at the MEETS level. Also, our college career and military readiness, or CCMR, meets criteria, and also some criteria for closing the gaps among our student groups. The second item that needs to be adopted are the district goal progress measures. These are the measures that we will periodically report to the board in order to track our progress toward meeting those goals in number one. And then finally, number three are the campus goals and progress measures, which our campuses have worked together to develop goals and progress measures associated with both the STAR exam and MAP growth, so that they can measure their progress toward obtaining our district goals. First, we'll talk about the district goals and our closing the gaps. Goal number one is that our percent of third-grade students who score at least a MEETS on, a great, MEETS grade level or above on STAR reading would increase from 60% to 66% by August of '27. The second goal is associated with the MEETS level on STAR math, and we would like to increase that, that rate from 55% to 62% by August of '27. And the third goal is the CCMR goal, that the percent of graduates who meet that criteria will increase from 69% to 75% by August of 2027. Just of note, frequently, when we're talking about a reporting on STAR data, we talk about a pass rate of STAR. This is actually that higher criteria of MEETS expectations on that exam. And then the chart you see there at the bottom shows our district closing the gaps targets that we have for those STAR-tested great, STAR-tested areas of math and reading over the next five years. The next thing we'll go over are the district progress monitoring goal progress measures. It's a mouthful. We'll call these GPMs. And so remember, this is the data that we're going to report so that you can work with us to really track our progress toward goals. For this, we'll be using NWEA MAP Growth, because that is an assessment that's given periodically throughout the school year, and it really does measure the amount of growth that our students are seeing on a periodic basis. And so our first GPM is that our third-grade students would meet the MAP growth measure in reading, that that percentage would increase from 53% to 60%. And then the second GPM is about the MAP growth measure in math, and we would set the goal that that percentage would increase from 66% to 70%. Of note is that we do not currently have GPMs for CCMR data. There are several reasons for that. One of them being that that data is actually reported from TEA in arrears, and so we don't see data until we're a year or two out from whenever those students have graduated. Additionally, however, we are really working towards some internal mechanisms for tracking that information so that we can see what our progress is like for each graduating class while they're still with us, and we have some opportunity to support those goals. The next item is the monitoring calendar for the House Bill 3 goals. We would like to report to you NWEA MAP Growth for grades kindergarten through third grade in math and reading during a board workshop after each administration of those exams. That will happen in the fall, where we'll report achievement data to you. And then at the winter and spring administrations, we'll be able to report growth data based on that initial baseline of achievement data in the fall. We will also report STAR goals and CCMR and our closing the gaps during the summer board workshop. That will, of course, will be timed contingent upon when we receive that information from TEA. And then that third item, remember, was about campus goals and data. We will be reporting that to the board in our weekly transmittal to you after each administration of the assessment. Finally, the campus goals and progress measures. These were developed collaboratively with our campus principals at both our elementary and high school levels. We looked at a lot of data and worked together for our elementary campuses to each set up their individual campus annual goals for the next five years of both STAR MEETS and also MAP Growth. So each campus will be measuring their own progress toward the goals that they have set in those particular areas. And then our high schools have worked very closely with Ms. Parkinson, looking at their CCMR data and determining what goals they would like to set, both for their overall goal for the next five years, but also for their subgroups as well, to ensure that we're making sure all of our students are graduating college-ready. And with that, I would be happy to answer questions or have any comments that you might have.
And you need action on this item. Quick, Dr. Hickman.
I move to approve as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Hall, second by Dr. Payne. Any further discussion?
Just some of the basic comments I made earlier, just obviously, a lot goes into this, so thank you, and all the folks from all the campuses who've, who've put this plan together. And then also that, I know there's a lot of love-hate with STAR, but I, I do believe that this is an example of why we do need some standardized testing to be able to look at, at an aggregate level where we're succeeding and where we're not, and where we need to, you know, put these goals together to, to improve. So I think that, that's what it can be used for, and so I think that's great. And then the other comment was, I would also like to see not only our district growth goals, but where are we hitting compared to kind of the state goals? So, because obviously, in some places, where they are already, we're actually exceeding those goals, well exceeding them. So that's wonderful, but then to be able to recognize quickly where we're, we're not meeting those yet.
Yes, that is certainly data we can provide.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. That will bring us to item K, K1, Consideration Approval, Consider Approval for the purchase of two vehicles for the additional two school resource deputies from Donaldson CDJR, based on Goodbye Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number 22-22-8F0000, in the amount of $69,703.50 using SRR3 funds. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Ms. Horak, and board members. Here with additional details on this agenda item is our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Amy Droz.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, Ms. Horak, members of the board. So to give you a little history, College Station ISD has an interlocal agreement with Brazos County to supply us with our school resource deputy program. So in August, you, Board of Trustees approved the budget for this school year that added two resource deputies for safety and security purposes. And then following in September, you also approved an amendment to that ILA that added those two to the agreement. But one of the requirements of that agreement is that College Station ISD will furnish those resource deputies with equipment, which includes a vehicle. So tonight, as part of the process, Ms. Schaefer, the Director of Purchasing, did solicit some quotes from several purchasing cooperatives that we are members of for two vehicles for these two additional officers. Price was certainly a factor, but also availability, because we all know that sometimes these have a lot of lead time. But she was very successful in securing two Dodge Chargers from Donaldson CDJR in the amount of $69,703.50. That was based on Goodbye Purchasing Cooperative. These are readily available, so we'll be able to get those within the district and then equip them as needed with the requirements that the SRDs have. So with that, I'll ask for your approval for the purchase of these two vehicles.
I motion approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Nolan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to item Executive Session. The board will meet in an executive session to discuss qualifications of new executive board nominees. Executive Session deliberations will be held pursuant to the Personnel Matters Closed Meeting. Exception to Texas Open Meetings Act is set forth in Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We will resume upon completion there. Thank y'all for being here. To all the teachers, administration, faculty, enjoy the vacation. Y'all have almost made it. All right, we are back in open session for item N, Consideration, N1, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding the Reorganization of Board Officials, Officers.
For 2223, I move to nominate Jeff Horak as President, Josh Ben as Vice President, and Geraldine Nolan as Secretary.
We have a motion by Mr. Hall, a second by Mr. Decker. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations. And that will adjourn us.